Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to call the LRA meeting to order. I am Kevin Arnold, the LRA chairman. On behalf of myself, fellow commissioners, and the mayor of the city of St. Louis, the Comptroller's Office, the St. Louis Board of Education, Neil Richardson, Sheldon Anderson, and the employees of the LRA, we welcome you. It is the job of the LRA to sell underutilized, underdeveloped properties to residents and developers that have the financial ability and the expertise to redevelop such properties and get them back to the tax roll. In a few moments, we will start our procedures listed on the agenda for today. If you have, if I have anyone that has signed up to speak on behalf of their offer, you will be given that chance, but please limit your presentations to three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we have been presented with the minutes for August 20th and August 28th, and I move that we accept the minutes, Chair, for August 20th and August 28th. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we call for the vote?
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Heitz?
Yes.
Hearing no objections, motion carries, minutes are accepted. Next, at this time, are there any reports?
No.
Of the commissioners?
No.
Any reports? No reports? Okay. So at this time, those who have registered to speak, if you could approach podium there and present your parcel in the order that we have, if you could go ahead. Dee, who's the first person?
First people we have will be for number five, that's Brittany Jackson.
Hello, I'm Brittany Jackson. My plan is, well, my project was rejected, but I don't feel it should be rejected because since I put in the offer, the whole block has actually went on the LRA list, and my plans for this project is gonna be sweat equity, and it's like my dream, my goal, like, I do this every day. So, I don't understand how they're saying I didn't provide the finances for a two-family when I'm converting it into a one-family home, and it's to, and I showed 25% of that, well, I showed more than 25% of what I gave to the offer as my finances, plus with my employment finances and everything else, I do have the ability to do sweat equity and be able to provide the funds for permits and things that I need to get this home up and running and the lot that I wanted next to it.
What is your previous experience?
Right now, I am, I work for Department of Corrections as construction maintenance. I'm working, they have put me through school. I started as an officer, they put me through school because this is my passion, they send me.
Sorry, I was talking about your previous experience rehabbing properties.
I rehabbing properties, well, I do all properties for, I do everything for Department of Corrections. I build nurseries, I didn't build it so much, I build classrooms, I do plumbing, HVAC. I do everything through my job since they didn't put me through school for it. I have all my certifications and everything through Lynn College. And since I've been on the team, I've actually then got promoted multiple times, and this will be my first baby. It's like, this is my dream for real.
Thank you.
Next person we have signed up is for item number 14. That's Sarah. No.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
This is Sam. We want to do a garden at the two prop, two properties that's on Cleon. We own three properties in the vicinity. We live Broadway and Marine.
About 200 foot away.
Yeah.
I've been before this board in the 90s.
And organically, that entire block, besides the two buildings that exist that are rented out, yes, one of which we own, one, it wants to be green space, and that would be great for the neighborhood, the neighborhood supports it. Other than that, I'm an avid gardener, and we have people that would like to also join in the garden.
Also, we have no yard.
Yes, we have no yard.
She does the street lawn. Check it out, Marine and Broadway, it's insanity.
Other than that, I clean up the blocks. Actually, I clean up many blocks, and I am involved in the fountain area at Chippewa, Broadway and Jefferson, where we just planted natives there with the help of the Shaw Nature Reserve, and we're also taking care of the garden at the firehouse, which is 3678. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
See, you're talking the right choice.
Good morning, good morning. I'm Craig Ellis, I'm part of the High Park Neighborhood. Been a part of the High Park Neighborhood since 71. What I was trying to do, I'd still work within the community as I do now, paint, do alleys, that's volunteer work on my own, because I've been a part of the neighborhood, and it's been looking kinda shabby, so. I live off the block of 21st Street in Penrose from 71. So now, it just seems like I can do a little bit more over there by cleaning it up and keeping it nice-looking, and having all those weeds, oh, we got elderly people over there, and you know, they do try to come out, take walks, but if the grass is so high around there, you never know what comes out of that grass early in the morning. So, my thing is, I was just trying to. They were saying making it, I was making it a lot. So, what I was trying to do is something around the whole neighborhood, just not that lot, but I usually cover from North Florissant all the way back over to 20th Street.
Okay, so, I'm unclear, what do you plan to do with this lot?
Well, this lot, I was basically making it just a parking lot, but about, by that being said, that wasn't feasible to you guys. But now, I've changed the plan on it, if you guys, I'm trying to see your eyes, ask me to make it a side lot, parking lot, so I don't know what you guys wanna make it out of. I mean, want you to make it out of. So what I was doing is still, I'm part of a construction, family building, construction, and that's mainly what I was doing, storing like my constructions, stuff on that lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This speaker said I have signed up, has anyone been overlooked?
Okay. With that, we will proceed to our offers to purchase. Under our offers to purchase, these are parcels that are owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground or physical structures, single-family residence, side lots, two families, four families, et cetera. The offers have submitted offers to purchase with the intention of rehabbing properties as residential or commercial projects, as an extension of their yard space, community gardens, or green spaces to enhance and beautify the community. The first category we have under the heading of new construction. New construction programs, these are Class A lots with a minimum of 4,000 square feet in total land with no more than three contiguous lots per offer. The first one we have in this category is Fidel Investments LLC, care of Brandy Hamilton Properties, 4211 West Bell Place and 4209 West Bell Place. I move that we counter this offer for $4,088 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second, just wanted to add to that, that we're going to, wanna amend that for a second. I'd like to make the counter for $44,088 with a 24-month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. And then, we heard Commissioner Heitz give us the second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on that? It's been moved in second, hearing no discussion. I'll call previous roll as a vote. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Item B, we have as-is rehab program. As-is rehab program, these are Class A residential buildings up to six units, no more than one building with no more than two contiguous lots or one commercial building. Item number two, property address is 5245 Ashland. Offerer is Ronnie Whitfield. I move that we accept the offer of $2,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number five, I'm sorry, item number three, Leela Malajic. We have property address 5932 Dretzel Avenue and 1247 Gimlin Street. Move to reject offer due to lack of sufficient financial resources to support the project.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number four, property address 2220 Alberta Street. Offer is Geraldo Espinoza. Move to reject offer due to lack of sufficient financial resources to support the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number five, we have Brittany Jackson. Property address, multiple addresses here, 4911 St. Louis Avenue, 4909 St. Louis Avenue, and 4909 H. St. Louis Avenue. Move to reject the offer due to lack of sufficient financial resources to support the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item six, Ebony Wilson. We have 6013 Emma, 6033 Emma, and 5624 Mimica. Move to accept offer of $3,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of development, development programs. These are offers for parcels owned by LRA that consist of physical structures, single-family residence, side lots, two-family flats, four families, et cetera, for the rehab and/or construction of any combination of the following: rehab and/or construction of mixed-use buildings, rehab and/or construction of multiple residential buildings, rehab of residential buildings with more than six units. The first property we have in this category is, offer is revitalization real estate developers. There are multiple properties listed in Exhibit A. I move that we defer any action on these parcels until we have a review of community input prior to the commission making a decision on these parcels. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Next category we have under the heading of general lot program. The general lot program provides guidelines for the sale of LRA vacant lots, Class A, for any purpose other than new construction, building rehab, or development. The first property we have in this category, item number eight, is property address 5038 Kate's. Offer is Brent J. Menard. I move to counter this offer for $1,880 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item nine, property address is 1430 Granville Place. Offer Valerie Rayford. I move to counter the offer for $893 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 10, we have multiple properties in Exhibit A. The offer is TBCT Legacy LLC, care of Leslie McRoberts. I move that we accept the offer of $3,883 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next item, item number 11, 5110 Enright. Offer is Lila Griffin. I move to counter this offer at $2,244 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next item, item number 12, we have property address is 2159 East College. We offer a Janel Langriston. Move to counter offer at $1,032 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number 13, we have property address 4206 North Florissant. Offer Craig Ellis. Move to defer any action on this parcel until further consideration. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number 14, we have two addresses. Offer is Sam Meller and Sarah Uellick. The property address is, the two addresses, 3619 Cleon Street and 3621 Cleon Street. Move to counter this offer at $6,000 going to the appointing authority with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number 15, Amina Ali. Property address, two, two addresses here, 3726 Finney and 3724 Finney. I move to counter this offer for $3,618 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, previous role is the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Okay, next, we have the side lot program. Under the side lot program, these are parcels that are owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground that are, that's, that is too small to support new construction. These non-billable lots are parcels that are less than 4,000 square feet and cannot be contiguous to another LRA parcel. These lots are made available and affordable to adjacent property owners to be used as a side lot and expand personal property. The first parcel, and looks like the only parcel that we have in this category, is 4558 Alice. Offer is Mary R. Hood and Sanja J. Hood Crenshaw and Carolyn Hood. Move to accept this offer. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of option renewal. Option renewals are offers, requests for additional time to complete projects due to the construction of delays, funding, and options that are near expiration. Offers must display proof of consistent progress to receive renewals of options and extension of time. First property we have in this category, we have multiple properties. In Exhibit A, the offer is Lutheran Development Group, care of Christopher Sherman. I move that we accept. We accept a 16-month option of $10,000 with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next category, we would be Prop NS. We do not have any properties under Prop NS at this time. So our next category is under the heading of donations. Donations are parcels which consist of unoccupied ground or structures owned by constituents who desire to donate due to no longer wanting the property or they are incapable of maintaining upkeep. The donation is entered into the LRA inventory and sold using the LRA process. The first property we have in this category, item number 18. Property address, 1238 North Euclid. The offer is US Bank National Association as trustee for Credit率First Boston Mortgage Securities Corp. Everything seems to be in line. Move that we accept this vacant lot. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number 19, we have 770 Albert Avenue. Offer is Louise B. Jones. I move that we accept this donation. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number 20, property address, 8466 Concord Place. Offer a Cal Morris. I move that we accept this donation. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Okay, our next category is under the heading of miscellaneous. Miscellaneous items are requested changes from the original approved board decision. These may include a change of end use, name change, et cetera. The request must go before the board for consideration. Okay, so the first item that we have here is Earl D. Hobson. Property address is 52, I'm sorry, 5425 Goodfellow Boulevard and 5431 Goodfellow Boulevard. Okay. I move that we accept the offer of $1,000 for these two parcels and send that to the appointing authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 22, I'm sorry, yeah, item number 22. Wait a second here. So do you need this? You're okay, okay. All right, item number two. Yeah, 22 is 4822 Labadee. We are going to move to accept the offer of $507 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of deferral, and we are looking at these offers a second or a third time. The first property that we have in this category is item number 23. Property address, multiple addresses here, 5331 Theodosia and 5335 Theodosia. Move to counter offer for $1,112 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next item, we have Christina Afonsenso. We have the property addresses, 716 South 2nd Street and 714 South 2nd Street. I move to defer any action on these two parcels for further consideration for the LRA commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item 25, we have multiple properties that are listed in Exhibit A, offered by the Israel of God's Church, General Trustees as their successors. Move that we counter this offer for $8,223 at a 24-month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Uh, with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-six. Offer Tiffany S. Turner, property addresses. Um, thirty-seven eighty-seven Lee Avenue and thirty-eight oh-eight Lee Avenue. Uh, move to reject offer due to it not being in the highest and best use of the parcel. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-seven. We have multiple parcels listed in exhibit A, the offer is Robert E. Nelson. Move to reject offer due to it not being in the highest and best use of the parcel. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, property address nineteen fifteen Ferry Street, offer. Tyler Davis, move to accept offer of five hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-nine, we have multiple. Properties listed in exhibit A, offer is H Q K Logistics LLC. I move that we counter this offer for sixteen thousand dollars. At a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A, offer Deidra Freeman. I move that we accept offer of thirty-six hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections. Motion carries. Uh, our next property, we have uh, item number thirty-one. Property address twenty-one oh-three East College. Offer Janelle Langerton and Latasha Langerton. I move that we accept offer of fifteen hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget. And financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-two, property address forty-nine seventy-five Davidson. Offer Felicia Eddington. Uh, move that we counter offer for three hundred and thirty-three dollars. At a twelve month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-three, we have property address fifty-four sixty-four Union Avenue. Offer Ebony Wilson, move to accept offer of a thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-four, property address fifty-four forty-five Robin Avenue. Offer Cedric Love, move to accept offer of five hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item thirty-five, property address thirty-seven twelve Penn Road Street. Offer Tabernacle Community Development Corps care of Andre Alexander. Move to accept offer of five hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and. Financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-six. We have offer Art Dem LLC, care of Daniel Cobalinko. Move to counter offer at five thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-seven, we have um, prop. Do, multiple properties thirty-eight seventeen North Twenty-third, thirty-eight fifteen North Twenty-third. Thirty-nine oh-one North Twenty-third. Uh, offer Fuels Easy LLC care of Ebony Stiegel. Move to defer any action on these parcels. Uh, pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item thirty-eight, property address thirty-seven forty Ohio Avenue. Offer Fast Lane Enterprise LLC, care of Brandon Jackson. Move to accept offer of two thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval. Of budget and financing and uh, proof of financial support. Um, we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-nine, offer Ernestine Young. Property address fourteen fourteen Penn Road Street and fourteen sixteen Penn Road Street. Uh, move to reject offer due to lack of proof of uh, financial capacity to support the project. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer Viber Blue Realty LLC, care of Vernon Gentry. Uh, move to accept offer of four thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval. Of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-one, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer Melissa Grimes, move to counter offer for one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-two, property address sixty fifty-two Horton Place. Offer Daniel Maba, move to accept offer of twenty-five hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-three, same address sixty forty, sixty fifty-two Horton Place. And move to uh, reject the offer in favor of another offer. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-four, property address eighty-nine eighty-four Edna. Offer Jose Armando Martinez and Ma Alisia Gonzalez. Uh, move to accept offer of five hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-five, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer Frontier Pedro, move to reject offer. Due to lack of proof of financial capacity to support the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number forty-six, same offer Frontier Pedro LLC. Move to reject the multiple offers due to lack of financial capacity to support the project. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-seven, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer We Dream Inc. care of Veronica Smith, move to reject the offer. Uh, due to lack of uh, proof of financial support to support the project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, uh, hearing no objection, motion carries. Uh, item forty-eight. Uh, offer is S G R Investments LLC. Care of Mark Davis, offer fifty-eight twenty-three Cabney. And fifty-eight seventeen Cabney, move to counter the offer. At sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget. And financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-nine, property address fifty fifty Emerson Avenue. Offer Demetrius Jones, move to accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval. Of budget and financing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty, property address fifty fifty Emerson. Move to accept, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this, okay, move to reject offer. Uh, in favor of another offer that was presented earlier. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-one, uh, property address fifty-seven eleven Maple Avenue. Uh, offer Ideal Enterprise Investment LLC care of Amber Simmons. Move to accept offer of five thousand dollars as a twelve month option. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item fifty-two fifty-one thirty-nine Wells Avenue. Um, move to um, counter uh, this offer. For two thousand dollars going to the appointing authority. Um, so yes, I'd like to counter that offer. Move, I'm, make the motion to counter the offer for two thousand dollars. Um, and going to the appointing uh, authority for as, as well as uh, presenting plans, budget. And financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. All right. Um, that concludes our parcels for consideration chair. So the next we have on our agenda are resolutions. And the first resolution we have from Sean, Sean Thomas, uh, Proposition N S Manager.
Yes, so thank you, Commissioner Brown. So, uh, we will call to present Resolution number twenty-four. L R A dash two four six, our Prop N S Program Manager Sean Thomas. Uh, as you are aware, Commissioners, the Prop N S Program funds the stabilization efforts for properties across the city of Saint Louis. Uh, we have recently reconvened the Prop N S Stabilization Advisory Committee. And through that committee, uh, Sean will present uh, the resolution which again moves for properties that are being nominated for stabilization. Sean.
Thank you, good morning. You have before you a resolution that you haven't seen in a while, our committee, as you have just heard, has been in, on hiatus, they are back to full strength. And met last month, or just earlier this month, uh, to recommend number of buildings for the Prop N S stabilization. I brought your attention to page two where the committee met on. See, just the date here, earlier this month on September tenth. And recommended the following seven buildings for stabilization with funds from Prop N S, fifty sixty-five Enright. Forty-two thirteen North Florissant, thirty-two oh-three Sullivan Avenue, twenty-five twenty-one North Spring. Twenty-six hundred North Spring, fifty-one fifteen Labady and fifty-two nineteen Co- Brilliant Avenue. They also recommended against use of Prop N S funds for the following four properties due to conditions that were beyond what our program could do. Forty-three oh-five Rosalie, eighteen nineteen North Newstead, and forty-two nineteen Saint Louis Avenue. And forty-three twenty-three Garfield. And we, the committee recommends that you. Authorize this resolution. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Okay, um, with that information, uh, I'd like to move that we accept. Uh, Resolution number twenty-four L R A dash two forty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, do we call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Hikes, how you?
Oh, ye- yes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
So, motion carries, okay. Uh, next, I, I think that's the only resolution we have.
That is the only resolution. Yeah, so, uh, at this time, there is no director's report, Commissioners. Uh, we will present a director's report at the October meeting. Which will also serve as our third quarter, uh, report out for L R A.
Our next commission meeting would be held October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Meet now is adjourned.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Do you have a second?
Thank you.
Hearing no objection, the motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Adjourn, thank you, everyone.